It is 7 o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order. I don't think we need to do introductions tonight. I think we all are the old gang here tonight. Any changes to the agenda? The only change I have is a Scrivener's error. I left in Labor Day under item number 6, so I'm just gonna strike that out.
And if you don't mind, 5B and E with the documents that Martha sent us, don't those two topics merge together?
Which one?
5B and E.
Household and group home.
Martha sent us like one email with like backup for both of those conversations.
Yeah.
And I thought maybe we should put them together, so...
We can switch the order, sure. You wanna do B and E together and then continue on to C?
Sure.
Apologies, I don't have the letter next to mine. Which one am I switching?
We're gonna take the group home definitions that are the fifth one down and move it up and consider that with the second one down, definition of household.
Okay.
Just 'cause they came together in the same email. I think we did the agenda before the emails went out, so what made sense in a vacuum, maybe not so much after the emails went out. Anything else on the agenda? The minutes from July 30th. I think we had something around the description for the ZBA report. Do you want me to just read what I had written?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I'm sure you could do it too, but I had already marked it down. So on the ZBA report by Jane, I would rather it say "update on the hearing" rather than "update to the hearing" for the Hall Art Foundation. And then it says "the hearing was canceled." Can we replace "canceled" with "postponed"? Due to state agencies not being available due to flooding in the northern parts of the state. I would then strike that whole last sentence because I'm not... I'm not sure what's happening, and you can speak to this better, you're the chair of that, but...
Do we just strike it?
Yeah.
Strike it and maybe replace it with "we are waiting information from the state." I assume there will be a hearing. Maybe it needs to be warned, maybe not. We're working with the Remont League of Cities and Towns to figure out if that needs to be done. But it was the state who was going to come to that meeting. Then they couldn't because of flooding, and we're just waiting on them. That was the only suggestion that I had. Any other changes?
No, I approve the meetings with those... Or I motion to approve the meetings without those changes. Jane just won over.
A second?
All right. Anyone opposed to those changes? Okay. If not, let's consider those approved. You got those? All right. I have so many papers tonight, I'd have to keep them all clear here. Next are reports, mail and email. The town clerk is closed this week, so I don't know. I don't think we have any physical mail, but you would check the emails. Do you wanna describe those?
So we got an email from Keith Tallon that says, "I wonder if there could be a zoning ordinance proposal that would limit the number of inoperable vehicles in property owners' yards. They really diminished the attractiveness of our town. Thank you for your work." And then one from Gina McAllister. "Hello, I'm interested in learning more about whether I'd be qualified to fill one of Res Redding's open planning commission seats. My telephone number is..." Have a great weekend. Gina McAllister. So I responded to both of them. I told Keith Tallon I would bring it up to the planning commission, and I told Gina McAllister to send... to email us like the reasons she wants to be on the planning commission and just a little bit blurb about herself and her experience. And then we... There are two permit requests. Should that go under zoning administration? Yeah, go ahead. That's it.
Okay.
From mail.
Thank you for checking on those.
That was Keith Tallon and Gina McAllister?
Gina.
Gina.
McAllister.
What's Keith's last name?
Tallon. T-A-L-L-O-N.
And do we wanna discuss that somewhere in other business or something like that? The inoperable vehicles?
We could.
Let's touch on it if we have time.
So when you say there were other... there were permits?
There's two permits, but that will go under zoning.
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 All right. Regional Planning Commission, we do not have Kathy on the phone tonight, so I assume there's no report. Energy Board, we do not have Brian, so I assume there's no report.
Well, just that they had the open house on Sunday for solar red. And it was really good. They explained, you know, the whole inception of it and how it was built and where it's connected and where it's gonna serve electricity and how much electricity, how much money, you know, saving money for the town because they're gonna... Well, right now they can electrify the firehouse, and then they're trying to electrify town hall and then the food shelf and the library, so, you know, save the town some money. And that next thing is working on battery storage for electricity.
Awesome.
It's not like powering, it's a meter offset, right?
Yeah, it sends to Green Mountain Power and they give us...
So they do a net from what is consumed to what is generated?
Right, right.
Great. ZA?
So there were two permits.
Okay.
Both approved. One Franklin and Corrus, those are the two last names, for storage structure, 12 by 12, and another Dillon Rally for a den.
I thought there were four.
I only saw two.
Wasn't there one for Gordy had one and someone else had one? Just for minor stuff, it wasn't anything major?
I thought that they were from before, from our last meeting.
Oh, were they? Okay.
They might have.
Because I got them all in the same email from Calista.
Oh, I'll check again.
Sorry, Franklin and Doris?
Here.
And those permits have been approved by the panel, there's nothing for us to do, right?
Right.
Great. Anything from the ZBA, Jane?
Nope.
Okay.
Just at the Select Board, they... the bridge engineers came and showed us the plan for the bridge and what it can and cannot do. And basically, and there was a hydrology report. So basically, we'll be moving on with the Hall permits, but I don't know when because we're waiting for the...
Reporting in progress.
We're waiting for the people from the state, advisors from the state that may come to the hearing, so we can't schedule it until they're available with more information, et cetera.
And is the Hall Art Foundation in contact with the state?
Yes.
To work with them to try to set that up?
Yes.
So we're waiting to hear from them?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Nothing else for reports? We can move on to the big part of the night, the continuing business? All right, we have a big agenda tonight. We also are... It's September. We have October to continue this. Martha, what is your estimate for when we need to be... When does it have to go to the Select Board? Maybe we should work backwards. So we're working under a grant received from... does it get any regional commission? The state?
From the state.
The state to update some of the bylaws, provisions that the state's interested in. And there's some deadlines associated that. Maybe you can tell us what they are?
The grant period ends in... at the end of January. If the Select Board has adopted them before then, then you don't have to pay your match.
And remind us, what's the match?
Like $1,500.
$1,500?
Around $1,500.
So they would have to be adopted by the Select Board before the end of January?
Right. So they would have had to have warned in their meeting. So there's time involved in that. You would have had to have your public hearing. Yeah, they have to have a hearing, you have to have a hearing. So the hope was that we would wrap everything up at the next meeting, and you'd warn them, hearing in November.
So...
See how things go tonight and see...
So we have tonight, we have October, and October is when we would be looking at kind of the final draft?
Hopefully.
Okay.
That's the...
So what if there are certain things not completed? Can it just be handed in like that?
I mean, sure. You can go with what you've got and then immediately start working on additional changes if you want, or move on to something else and come back and make changes. Just, I mean, both the town plan and the zoning regs are really constantly works in progress because things are always coming up that you wanna change. Laws are... the state laws are always changing, so...
So the PC would have a hearing in November. Is that this meeting or is that an additional meeting?
It's often, you know, just...
Incorporated into this meeting?
Yeah.
And then would the goal be for the Select Board to have a hearing in December or January?
Either, as long as it's before the end of the year.
And we have to present this to the Select Board at that hearing? Is that how it technically works? So we have a hearing, we move it forward to the Select Board. They have a hearing. I guess my question is, do we present it, the changes, or...
Often someone...
Just slip it under the door?
Give it to them, they review it, and then they have a hearing?
Yeah, I mean, often someone from the planning commission or several people from the planning commission will attend to, you know, talk about or answer questions.
And there's a report that has to go back to the state, right?
There is a report, so I gotta draft something for you to look at.
Something you work on?
Yeah.
We work on? You draft it, we look at it?
You look at it, you decide whether it represents what you accomplished.
But you're doing the overall work on the report?
Draft it for you to look at next time.
And when is that report due in this process?
It goes when you are ready to warn your hearing and you send your hearing notice, your report, and your draft regulations to the state.
Okay.
Also to your neighboring towns to say, "We're having a hearing on our zoning regs."
For our meeting, not the Select Board?
For your meeting, yeah.
So this theoretically would happen in November? And then we submit it as-is? If we don't get to everything like Jane was saying, then we can submit it as-is. So after, if we do submit it as-is, we don't get finished, what happens once the Select Board adopts it? Do we still get your help from there on, or are we sort of on our own?
Well, the grant funding's all, you know, it's actually already used up, so I don't know if you wanted to...
You still have her number?
Do another round. We'd have to find some funding somewhere for it.
Okay. In terms of the work plan, do you feel like we are on track?
Well, you and I met in August, and the one thing that seems like it may have to wait for another day is the small business thing.
Okay. All right. So with that framework, let's get going. The first thing we've been talking about for a couple meetings now are these complicated subdivisions. We are trying to downstream a little more authority to the ZA for minor subdivisions and lot line adjustments. And we were working on figuring out which design standards should apply to minor subdivisions versus major subdivisions. So the way is now being structured, rather than having the planning commission look at all subdivisions, the ZA is in charge of lot line adjustments and minor subdivisions, which is defined as dividing one lot into just two. And then anything more than that is gonna be a major subdivision. So the design standards used to apply to everything. Some of the design standards are not applicable to a minor subdivision or a lot line adjustment. So it was just going through and parsing out which of the design standards should apply to the minor ones and which should apply to the major ones. Is that an accurate representation of where we're at?
For the most part, except we also talked about lot lines. And so I did insert a paragraph...
Okay.
That very, you know, very minor...
Okay. So why don't you walk us through... I'm hoping that this is not a lot because we've already gone through all of this before. It's really just making sure that it all fits and works. So right now, we're looking to make sure that it all fits.
I think quickly where we left off, from what I remember, is we were through with minors and what the ZA could do, and we started to dive into majors. And then we were like, shouldn't the ZA keep in mind everything in the majors?
Yes.
In the minor, and we were like, that's going to be too convoluted. We might as well just keep it to...
Yeah. So I think some of those provisions are not gonna be applicable to the minors. A lot of them aren't, so let's go through and see where we're at now.
All right, so right now, I just pulled up the stuff that you've been looking at many times, just to point out the things that I added since we last talked.
It's in green?
And it's in green. For the lot line adjustments...
Green highlight.
It's highlighted. So yeah, it says, "In reviewing lot line adjustment applications, the zoning administrator should ensure, to the extent feasible, that lot lines follow existing linear features such as roads, tree lines, fence lines, and/or stone walls, and do not disturb the natural contours of either property, bisect any of the natural or cultural features mentioned in the design standards in section 5.6.5.2, or result in irregularly shaped lots." So that's an additional thing to consider about lot lines.
And where did this language come from?
When Eve and I met, she felt that some of those design standards should apply to lot lines.
So these were the features that were in the design standards that used to apply to everything, but then, once we split them into minor and major, they were only applying to the major. So it seems like the ZA should also be not creating dogleg lots or chopping a stone wall in half. Like, the ZA should be considering natural features as well in creating a two parcels out of one.
Well, this is for lot... This isn't creating the two parcels. This is for just for lot line adjustments.
This is just a lot line adjustment. Okay, sorry, I'm lost in the...
To not adjust the line so that, you know...
You're cutting any of that stuff?
Cutting a pond in half, you know, cutting a...
Just, you know, thinking out loud, if I have a property and I have a neighbor and we wanna do a lot line adjustment and we cut our ponds, a pond in half, and we're both sharing the pond, why is that anyone else's business other than ours?
Right.
Well, you know, if that's the intent... Like, if you mean to cut the pond in half, I guess that's up to you. I'm just looking to see if this should ensure... Maybe "ensure" is too strong. It's meant to kind of give guidance to the ZA to be thoughtful about how the lot line is adjusted.
And I would, my outlook on it would be, I would leave that up to the two property owners because they're the ones living with it from there forward.
Unless one property is sold.
But then they're buying the property with that condition.
So I think the difference is that these used to apply already in the design standards, but when we carved it out, when we broke up the subdivisions into three different types, we lost that concept. So it's not putting the concept where it wasn't before. It's just...
Spreading.
Adding it back in. So it used to be, is that right? Not for the lot line?
I don't think they did apply the lot lines.
So ZA did the lot line just by himself?
Just by himself and without any of those design standards.
I just think we're getting too involved...
Too much.
...in people's use of their property. And if you have an agreement between two property owners, then why not? And then if you sell it, like Jane said, you sell it with the survey and the condition that, hey, you're sharing the pond, or you're sharing the wall, or the oak tree.
I kind of agree with him.
You're not near it. I could go either way. Strike it. Okay.
My suggestion.
But striking it in lot line adjustments?
Lot line adjustments.
Right.
Okay.
It's not letting me. I don't know if I can do that while I'm... Poof, it's gone.
There we go.
Okay. And then, so for the minor subdivisions, since we did want some of those to apply to the minor... some of the design standards to apply to the minor subdivisions, I simply added this one sentence, that the proposed subdivision meets design standards 1 through 6 in section 5.6.5. And we are gonna look at those, so as we're looking at them, if you feel like this should or shouldn't apply to minor subdivision, we can adjust this statement.
And so, to be clear, they used to apply, right? Because minor, a two lot subdivision used to come before the PC?
This is a case where yes.
Okay.
All these standards used to apply to all subdivisions.
Okay.
Just not to lot line adjustments.
And for clarity, 5.6.5 is a new section? Because in the ordinance, it stops at 5.6.2.
Well, they were all there. I don't think... They may not have been called design standards, but they were all in there already, so a lot of it's just moving them around, so...
It's new numbering.
Right, yeah, but I was doing a cross-reference back and forth manually, and I was like, this doesn't even exist currently.
It shouldn't be new text, it's just reshuffled.
I mean, some of it has been reworded slightly, but for the most part, it's moving things around. And then the only thing that was different, last time we talked about major subdivisions, we had included the ridge line district, so I just took that out of this subdivision and the wildlife district or the flood hazard area, and took out ridge lines.
We took out ridge line?
Yes. And switch to the design standards. So 1 through 6 are the ones that would apply to both minor and major, and then I think it's 7, 8, and 9 maybe would only apply to major. The one I'm still having a little bit of trouble with, and I added some language this afternoon in parentheses there after number 2, the highlighted section, or the gray highlight, where it says, "and/or which in the commission's judgment are an asset to the site and/or community." If that's gonna apply, if the zoning administrator is gonna use that, then it can't have anything to do with the planning commission's judgment because the zoning administrator only has the zoning administrator's judgment. So I was trying to think of a way to pull that out of the middle of that whole long list of things.
Is that an important feature, do you think?
Well, I was also concerned about it because to me, it sounds like standardless discretion.
Yeah, if there were... Judgment just doesn't flow well.
Right. I mean, it's like you've got all these things to be considered, and it does say "including but not limited to," so that there really is something else that's relevant. It could come in under the "but not limited to," I think.
Trying to think of what it could be.
So this, which I didn't send you this, it's up there on the screen in parentheses. It says, so one thing I would suggest is "leave but not limited to." Take out the "and/or which in the commission's judgment." And then if you want something like that in there, you could say, "if additional unique features are discovered during a site visit associated with the review of a major subdivision by the planning commission, and those features are determined by the planning commission to be an asset to the site or the community, those features shall also be preserved to the extent possible." That's if you still want something like that in there.
I mean, that is... That works for me because it's not totally binding and mandatory and preserves a little bit of, if they discover something incredible, I don't know what? Some amazing Emerald Mine or something?
I mean, some things, like if it was an Indian burial ground or something. I mean, the state law would come in on that, and, you know, you wouldn't be able to disturb it anyway. But I don't know, it's, yeah.
I think taking out the ZA's judgment or the commission's judgment is probably good.
Yeah, it's just thinking from an applicant's point of view, if you take "but not limited to" and you fast-forward to "and/or which in the commission's judgment," if you had a situation where someone had a disagreement or an issue with another person, the applicant, or vice versa, then the commission could just sit there saying, "Well, you need this, you need this, you need this, you need this, you need this," and then it makes it impossible. And that, I think, is what we wanna try to stay away from.
I think so.
I think as long as there are state, like archaeological rules for the state, that if something is of value that can't be disturbed, then we don't need to double up on it or give one person the power to, you know...
How do you feel about the last sentence that Martha is suggesting in the parentheses?
So what are we thinking above that?
Striking out the gray.
The gray.
Strike out "and/or which in the judgment."
The town plan shall be identified and preserved insofar as...
So most things are in the town plan. The town plan is pretty extensive. I think if there were something discovered, that might be different?
Yeah.
So leave the red language down at the bottom?
I think so.
Okay. You're right.
And we're leaving "but not limited to," correct?
I think so. Okay.
Did anyone have any other thoughts on any of these on lot layout or other thoughts on the natural and cultural features?
So these are all what used to be there, right?
So like with roads, driveways, and utility corridors, there were two separate sections that had things related to access roads and such, so I put them all in one section.
But the substance is the same as what we used to have?
I believe it's, yes, I believe so. I can't promise that I didn't tweak a tiny bit here or there, but...
That's not reassuring.
Well, I mean, I'd have to go back and do what you did, Stacy, and just reread them. It just got so cluttered with cutting and pasting and...
But we do understand one word can make a big difference.
The intent was not to add any additional restrictions, right? It was just to...
Right, right. No, I wasn't intending to...
Reorder them to be more user-friendly.
So this brings up a good point. So when we propose this to the Select Board, how do they easily get to see what was and what we're proposing?
I think they're just gonna have to look at the red line. So there'll be a final red line without all the... So, there'll be a final red line, without all the greens and yellows and whatnot. And they'll have to read through the red line, and if they have, you know, concerns, they'll have to go back to the non-marked one and parse it out.
Okay.
Yeah, they're going to get a messy version, you know, they're going to get a much... I had to cut and paste this out, just because it was, like, driving me crazy to try and move things around and rearrange things. But, if you're okay with everything, I will go back to the master document and change everything there, and it will track the changes, and so they'll see everything. It'll be messy for them, it'll be hard to read, but...
Because I think, even for us, before we feel comfortable submitting it to the select board, I think we should
For sure.
Be sure that we know what we're delivering.
Absolutely. I think we're going to need one whole month of taking that document, and sitting with it, and making sure that it's what we remember, it's what we agree, that we haven't missed anything.
Right.
And again, this, this review is really limited to the state's requests and the interests of this grant. I'm sure there are plenty of places in this Reading zoning code that could use improvement, including river corridors and other places, but that's not what we're looking at right now.
Right.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, so my intent was to reorganize, and when I cut and pasted into the the master document, I'll double-check, you know, but you will see all the changes in that. It'll just be real messy and hard to follow. So, like, the second one, 3B, where sites include linear features, I know I did very slightly edit that, and for clarity, not for meaning.
I did cross-read these, and I am comfortable with it, but you, you two have to be comfortable with it as well.
Well, I didn't dig in. Do cross-reference, but, you know, we, like I said, we do need to do that before we submit it. And if it's all, if it's inclusive of what was there, it's just reorganized, then I don't think I have an issue with it. As long as we're not changing anything, adding to, eliminating.
I don't think so. So, we, we looked at it pretty carefully when we met earlier in the month, and I didn't see anything that was like a, a new concept or a new requirement. It's hard to do on the spot right, right now, but that...
So, the water and wastewater, for example, what you had in there, you're not allowed to have in there. I can pull up the, the master document instead. It's just, I don't, well, I have a copy here, so I could kind of go back and forth, but...
So...
Your master document says that they have to provide a water and wastewater permit with the subdivision application, and you're not allowed to require that?
Yeah, I, I read that later on, and I, I didn't, this, I think, reads fine.
Right.
Before you could build, you have to have it.
Right.
Which, I think, is what people typically run on.
Right.
But then later, it said that you have to add, you have to include it in the subdivision application, which isn't the normal process.
So, that's the master document, which is old news, and that's Martha's fix.
Okay, alright.
So, the master document hasn't been updated, the document that we both probably printed off this last time around doesn't have this yet, because we haven't given it the, given it the thumbs up.
And if I'm remembering correctly, agricultural soils, the information's all the same, but I think I reworded that a little bit, to make it more clear. And because before, it was lumped in with wildlife habitat and some other things, well, it does show you what, what's crossed out. Subdivision boundaries, building sites, forests. All those things were in 3, 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D. And now they're separated, so that the agriculture stuff is under agriculture, the access stuff is under access, and the forest stuff is under, is under significant wildlife habitat.
So orderly.
What do I need to mute?
Uh, you just mute yours in microphone.
Oh, I think it is.
Is it yours, or is it mine's? But I had mine muted.
Mine's on zero.
Yours is muted. No, it's not.
It's maybe the volume of your device.
Mine's shut off.
Oh yeah, somebody's town of Reading is talking. So, the wildlife habitat overlay, is that something that's managed by Fish and Wildlife, right? That's not managed by the town.
You have, you have a separate district, the significant wildlife habitat overlay district.
Can you just down your...
I did. I don't know if it's on.
Because you can't hear me?
Yeah, so, as long as everyone's Zoom microphone is muted and your device volume's completely locked, it should be okay.
Wait, 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 I just got a mess.
I wonder if there's anything to do, Martha, making me the host, so that you can share your screen. There's another way that we can do it, maybe if you try that, then I'll just stay as the host.
I'm not hearing it still, is, are you guys?
I'm not hearing it.
I'm hearing it.
I feel like I'm hearing the volume out of yours.
But, look, it's this thing. It's down as far as I'll call. Oh wow, I'll use this stuff.
So, the, the, the wildlife habitat, Stacy? So, I'm comparing it to what we used to have versus what the new is. I think substantively, they're the same. So, it used to say, subdivisions in the wildlife habitat overlay shall in addition comply with dimensional and supplemental district standards in the significant wildlife habitat overlay district. And now it says subdivisions within the wildlife are considered major subdivisions and shall be reviewed by the PC for compliance with the dimensional and supplemental district standards in the district, as well as subdivision design standards in this section. But, I think, I think they're hitting the same things.
So, basically, what we're saying is the ZA cannot approve a minor subdivision if any portion of the property being subdivided is in a wildlife habitat.
Correct.
So, it immediately gets deferred to the commission.
Is a major subdivision.
Okay.
It has to go to the commission, yes.
And so, the, for, starting with 7, it's 1 through 6 that would be, would apply to a minor subdivision, and then 7, 8, and 9 would apply to major subdivisions.
So, for minor subdivisions, those are not burdened by 7, 8, and 9?
Correct.
Even though they used to be, but it wasn't really applicable.
And that was one reason I moved things around, so that we could say the first 6, and then, you know.
Right.
Rather than saying 1, 5, 7, and 8, you know, it seems cleaner. Ultimately cleaner.
Yeah.
So, there's, yeah, the undue burden on public facilities and services.
That's the same.
Other than moving the piece about access driveways being, driveways being accessible by the fire department, emergency services, that has to apply to minor as well as major, so that one piece was moved up under access. And then it's more extensive down here, you know, to look at nearby intersections and so on. You know, if it were a 50-lot subdivision, you'd want to look at all that kind of stuff.
And that mirrors what was in minor that we discussed in the last meeting.
I think so.
So, were there any questions or concerns about any of the design standards?
Not for me.
Well, that's it, right? Number 9 is the last one.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright. I think, subject to a final review, once the draft is all put together, we've gotten three subdivisions. That was a three, three-meeting epic. Great, thank you, Martha, that was a ton of work that you did on that.
And we were going to jump to, alright.
So, in, in keeping with our practice of not voting on every little thing, when we all nod our heads and say, yep, we're done with that, we're good?
Yep.
We're assuming that that is a, is a thumbs up, and, and move on. Next on the agenda is to look at the document that Martha sent.
Recording was progress.
They're updated, but they don't go both.
Uh, both updated the definition of family, so it was trying to make it a little more modern. And the same document included information from the state about group home definitions. So, let's find that one, and then we can look at both of those at the same time. So, we had talked last time about changing single-family home to single household, since, you know, it could be a different formulation. And Martha had suggested, when she and I were talking, of saying a group of people living together in the same dwelling unit. I have concerns about that, because I think it could have unintended consequences. So, the definition of family, we could replace the word family with household, that works absolutely fine, but keep the same definition, which is an individual, or two or more people related by blood, marriage, or legal adoption, or those placed at home for adoption, foster children, or a group of not more than five people not related by blood or marriage, living together as a single housekeeping unit. 5 was the number that our code had, it could be 6, it could be 7. If there's no number, it could be a dormitory for Okemo staff. So, I don't think we mean to circumvent any other protection we have in our code for a workforce housing, occult...
Commune.
A commune. A college, I don't know, any of the things one could think of. I don't think we mean to say that any number of people that inhabit a single, formerly was called a single-family home, is okay. So, I think keeping some form of the prior definition, and changing the word family to household is the better course than just eliminating any kind of numbers.
Well, so I sent you what the LCT said, and they said, "it's fine to have limits if they're based on public health, safety, general..."
Update.
I think, yeah. Rather than having a random number, and typically, it's good to try to avoid having standards in your definitions, so I think I would suggest, rather than saying under households, for example, I'll go to find that, a group of people living together in the same dwelling unit, rather than saying a group of five people, or six people, or eight people. I mean, the number of bedrooms, septic, the number of parking spaces.
I feel like that is super complex, like, that is a, that to me feels like a change that could have far-reaching implications in the code that we haven't even thought of, unless we go through the code and find single-family house in every instance. That's what I'm worried about.
Well, it is, it would be a major dive, I think, and, and it would take a lot of time and effort to define all of it, but I think the wastewater specifically states how many people you can have in a property, how many bedrooms, and how many people you can have in those bedrooms. So, you're sort of governed by the state in the wastewater permit. So, you couldn't have 10 people in a two-bedroom house legally, according to the state wastewater permit. You could have, what is it, four, I believe?
Four.
Four, two people per bedroom.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, if you randomly say five, and you've got an eight-bedroom house, you're kind of telling the people they can't use three of their...
16, because theoretically, if your wastewater is accommodating eight bedrooms, then per the state permit, you can have 16 people living there.
Right.
So, if I buy a parcel of land, and I want to build a really big home with 45 bedrooms.
45 bedrooms?
To house my entire winter workforce for Okemo Mountain.
Oh, wow.
And I mean no disrespect to Okemo, make it any mountain.
Right.
A Scutney mountain.
Or the Woodstock Inn.
Or the Woodstock Inn. And I want to call that what used to be called a single-family house, which sort of had a connotation that it was a family, or some form of family organization. Not a large group of housing, which might or might not be allowed in that district. I would have to really satisfy myself, before I went and changed the definition, which I don't think is being required by the state, right? We're just sort of playing around with it, trying to make it more inclusive. I would have to really run through all the scenarios and make sure that we weren't permitting a gigantic building to be built by some organization that would be used for purposes that are not what's intended.
I could be wrong, but I think if, and I'm not sure what the limitations and the restrictions are, but if, if you went above and beyond what the state considers a family home, then it triggers Act 250. And I can't even imagine what a septic system would be like for 46 bedrooms. But it would be really, really inclusive and costly, very costly. But it may, you know, with the lack of employment options in the area, may be beneficial to someone. I don't know if we're dealing with that anytime in the near future, but...
It might, but if you're living in your house, and all of a sudden, this one goes up next door, then that's not consistently what you thought you were buying into.
True.
And there are big septic systems, I think that senior housing in Norwich is on septic. They're not on municipal, and that's a lot of units. So, I just, I, I know that this feels like a, a thing that we want to do, and be like, oh, let's replace family with household, I'm great with that. But to change the definition without then following it down in every spot in the code makes me uncomfortable. Just to make sure that we're not opening up something that we didn't mean to.
So, could we align ourselves with the state and say 8? And anything above 8, it has to go through a review?
I mean, I'm fine with picking a, picking a number, 5, 6, 8.
I don't know that the state says 8.
Oh, I thought I read something where it said up to 8.
That's for the group homes.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm completing.
So, would the state say that our definition is not a legal definition now?
Well, the state, in their recently passed Act 181, they said you can't restrict the people, people who live together, but by, you know, you can't say they have to be... But by, you know, you can't say they have to be family. They have to be married, or they, you know. I forget exactly what the language is. I think I quoted it in there. Let me stop sharing this and find that other...
I mean, so we were saying down below that you can have a group home of up to eight. More than that, we could either require certain restrictions on, or not, not allow them at all. If the group home wanted to be 16 and they called themselves a household, they've just gone right around it. So I even have a group home, we just call themselves a household.
It gets very complicated.
It's very complicated. That's what I'm worried about. I, in, in principle, I understand it, but the, the devil's in the details on this one, unless we really want to track through the whole code and see how it's affecting things and what's permitted use. I think, I think it's, um, risky.
So, so what I asked the LCT was, I said, this is Redding, I didn't use your town's name, but this is the town's definition. This is a suggested definition for household. And I made the suggestion in part to comply with the following from Act 181. No zoning or subdivision by law shall have the effect of prohibiting unrelated occupants from residing in the same dwelling unit. And I asked if you can set a limit on the upper number. And they said yes. And then they talk about what courts will allow. So they will allow regulations that impose limits on the number of individuals occupying a dwelling if it's related to public health, safety, morals. I don't know why, but it has that in there, but general welfare.
No, no harems, no brothels.
However, they will not be deferential to legislative bodies when they enact zoning ordinances which arise to an intrusive regulation of the family. I don't know why they say that when they're saying you can't use...
It's a super complicated issue, right? And they're saying, so you can have limits on the number of people if there is a relation to health, safety, morals, general welfare. For example, preventing overcrowding, minimizing traffic, parking congestion, undue financial burden on a school system. Like, that's a lot of concepts to try to squish into one tiny little definition. So me personally, I, I think we should leave the definition the way it is. If we want to revisit this in a more fulsome way, I think that's more than 20 minutes in a meeting. I think that's really parsing it apart and looking through the whole code to figure out where it's going to be hitting. And if we want to change the number from five, five seems, Jane was giving the Brady Bunch example. What if it's six? You know, we've got three kids and Mr. and Mrs. Brady.
Well, I can't even think of households that may have more than five, that are a family.
You can think, right?
Here, yeah, so...
So maybe it's eight.
We're gonna say they're illegal.
Yeah. And, you know, maybe we should be putting in, uh, you know, I don't even know if domestic partnerships still exist, but if it's blood, marriage, adoption, foster, I don't know if there is a domestic partnership statute in Vermont anymore, or just domestic relationship, you know, if people are partners, that's fine. But I think changing it to sky's the limit could have a, a lot of unintended consequences.
Right. Well, I think probably eliminating family is a good thing. You've already said...
Yeah, inserting household instead.
To single household.
Yep.
And, you know, you get a bunch of young, young adults who can't afford to rent a place on their own, or, you know, right after college, oh, I live with four or five other people in a house. I mean, just, nobody could afford their own.
It's still happening today everywhere.
Yeah, so...
So what's the right number?
Well, I mean, that's where I think it gets tricky, because how do you apply that when you don't know what's the size of the house?
Two people per bedroom?
Yeah, you could, you know, I mean, if you were gonna do something, I'd probably do so.
And that would align with the septic requirements.
Right.
Okay.
I'm just making notes. So I'd add that to the, the household definition.
So it's a, a, a group of persons not related by...
Related or not related. Blood-related or not.
Or a group of persons...
So I could have...
Living together as a single housekeeping unit, and then somehow working in the concept of not more than two per bedroom.
Right. So you'll, we'll have to come back to that, I think.
Okay. I don't think we need to wordsmith it now, but I think, I think that's a reasonable concept. I don't know that it would solve my thought if someone wanted to build that giant 45-bedroom, single-family house.
That'd be 90 people.
So I, everyone should think about this one a little bit more. I don't, I don't mean to be, um, you know, unreasonable, but I do, I think everyone should go back to where we say that single-family houses are permitted use in all districts, and then think about, do we really mean that? If it's all of a sudden just people living together.
Well, and you also have to consider being, if we're looking at extremes, if there's another pandemic, a lot of us had all of our families rerouted to Vermont to stay away from, you know, any harm. So in an instance, like, it, it was temporary.
But I think we should look at the census too, and see the largest family, and maybe the size of the house, and not kick anybody out.
Yeah, it, it gets very involved, the conversation.
I think it's a very involved conversation. Martha, why don't you give, give a, give a shot at revising it based on this conversation, and then we can revisit it again?
Yeah.
Next time. And everyone should go through the code.
To try to simplify it.
Yeah. All right. So that was family. On that same document was group homes, which is a totally different concept, right?
Yes.
Different, but similar.
So I asked these two questions to the LCT. For one thing, your current regulations say you don't need a permit to turn a single-family home into a group home. You have to just submit a letter certifying that your group home meets all the requirements of the law. You can require a permit to convert a single-family home, or a single household, to, uh, to a group home, according to the LCT. The other question that I had after even I talked was, do bylaws have to allow group homes for nine or more people? They do have to allow for eight or fewer. And, no, they don't. I mean, you currently do, so do you want to continue to do that? That's, that's option.
We currently do allow.
Yes.
So we currently say a residential care home or group home serving nine or more who have a, were changing handicapped to disability, is defined in the statute. Shall be reviewed as a multi-family, now it's multi-household dwelling, and be subject to conditional use and site plan review. So the code allows it, subject to conditional, as a conditional use, subject to site plan review. We don't have to allow them at all. We currently do. We could continue with that, or we could take it out and not have them at all, which would be allowed under state law.
So what was required to be added to this is that you now also have to allow recovery residences that are serving not more than eight people. So I put that in, because you have to have it.
Would a recovery residence have not already been included in the definition of a group home or a residential?
It was sort of, um, not implied.
Oh, so they just want to make sure that you can keep it out?
Right.
We're not leaving anyone out, again.
So where we say a residential care home or group home could have more than nine, subject to conditional use and site plan, does that also include a recovery residence?
It does not have to. It only has to if it's eight or fewer. If you want to continue to allow residential care homes or group homes with nine or more as a conditional use, without including recovery residences, you can.
Without including recovery?
You've got to include the recovery residences if it's eight or fewer.
Eight or fewer.
But you don't have to include any of them for nine or more, so...
So I guess we have a question of, does Redding, is, is Redding a place where there should be residential care homes or group homes with nine or more? And if, if yes, would that also include a recovery residence of nine or more, subject to conditional use and site plan?
So is the infrastructure in Redding capable of handling something like that?
Well, is it village or rural?
Either. Like, we have no police department. We have no police department.
I, um, I think because it's a multi, a multi-family, multi-household dwelling, multi-household dwellings are allowed where? Not in RR10, not in RR5.
But you do, you separately specify group homes with nine or more. And I think it's in all of them.
So if it is nine or more, it says shall be reviewed as a multi-household dwelling. I guess what I'm getting at is, does that mean it could only go where you allow a multi-household dwelling?
So Redding household, under, okay, under the Felsfield District, you specifically allow group homes with more than eight. And in the, in Hammondsville, and South Reading, and the RR5, the RR10, the RC25, so you...
So it's all...
So it's already in there?
So I don't know why it says it should be, it shall be reviewed as a multi-unit dwelling when it's...
Multi-household?
Multi-household.
Whatever it's called.
Well, I think that's two different things. Multi-unit would be like a duplex, triplex, fourplex, where multi-household could be...
One house.
One house shared with a bunch of people.
Which in a group home, I think, is probably more likely anyway.
Yeah, foster home, or recovery home.
Well, uh...
I don't have an issue with it, but you did bring up a good point, Jane, with the, the policing.
Or emergency services.
Well, and emergency services, which we should have that covered, I would hope.
So group homes, as Martha has pointed out, are currently, um, listed as conditional uses in all districts, yeah?
For the, for nine, for nine or more, yeah.
For more than eight.
Right.
I think if they are calling out recovery residences for eight or under, that's absolutely included. For more than eight, I don't know if Redding is the best situated to provide the services for more than nine for recovery residents.
So then the question is...
So leave the group homes...
Do we...
And residential care homes, but not as a recovery residence for more than eight.
And we can cybergate that, like, legally?
That's what I heard you say.
All it says is that if it's eight or fewer, you have to allow it.
And if, but with a conditional use permit, correct?
No, not for eight or fewer. There's, you're, currently, you don't require any permit at all. You can require a permit.
So maybe we should require a conditional use permit?
For nine or more.
I don't think you can require a conditional use permit. It can be, it's, you have to treat it as a single-family residence.
Okay.
So...
It's a permitted use, basically.
So eight or under is a permitted use?
Right.
Anyway.
So, but you can require that they apply for a permit and Bob goes out and looks at it.
For eight and under, we can require them to?
For eight and under, you can require a permit. For a permitted use, you can't do it for a conditional use.
So how about for over eight?
Then you can, it can be a conditional use.
Say a conditional use permit.
Right, that's what you currently say.
So maybe that's what we should, that's, leave it at that?
Nine or more.
Because then it has to come before the review board, and you can then ask more questions, get more in-depth, figure out then if it's suitable?
Yeah, I agree.
Rather than just saying outright, no.
With the standards for reviewing conditional use, if, if you had a concern about, say, a residential recovery facility that was more than, that was nine or more, could you prevent such a facility if you wanted to? Or are the standards quite strict?
Well, it's right, you could open up for a challenge.
Yeah, you'd have to look at the conditional standards.
Right, so aren't we experts in conditional use standards now?
Yeah, I'm not expert in anything unless I go back and read it and run the scenario through my head.
It could be, I, I don't know if your questions covered it with the VLCT, but there must be case law about towns denying a conditional use permit for nine or more.
Well, there's a big case up in Newbury right now about a residential recovery program.
And how's it going?
And, uh, I'm not sure of the current status, but the teeny-tiny town, which is pretty much like Redding, felt like it was going to be difficult for them to manage the social services.
I think, last I heard, they lost, the town lost their appeal. But I think the state still decided to put it somewhere else.
So the state was going to locate it there without the, it was going to be a, a state put...
Oh, I think I saw something like that.
And, um, I believe Newbury said, not the right location. And then they, I, I don't know what happened after that.
The town lost, and then the state decided to put it somewhere else because of the friction?
I, I, I don't know why, and I could be wrong that they decided to put it somewhere else. I just, I do recall reading that, that the town had lost their appeal.
Because I think if you say no to anything, the, you know, you could be setting the town up for a challenge.
So we already have group homes. We don't already have recovery residences for nine or more. I think that we don't need to add that in at this time. We could always add it in later and see how it plays out.
So keep it basically like it is. It's a conditional use, nine or more. They have to submit an application, it goes through a review, and then, okay.
So not take that away. We already have that in our code.
Right.
It hasn't been a problem. We don't need to strip that out of our code. But we also don't need to add in specifically recovery residences at this point.
Yeah, we don't have to, I agree with that.
Right, because if it's not in, then it, it's a moot point, right?
Well, not a moot point, but it's...
It doesn't, it can't, like, someone can't come in and say, I'm gonna put in a group home with nine, well, you can't, it's not, it's not in our zoning.
A group home, yes, but not...
A group home is the recovery residence.
Right, but that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Like, you can't add it in if it's not in our zoning.
At the beginning of your regulations, it says if it's not specifically allowed or exempted, it's prohibited.
Okay.
Okay. Makes sense?
And you're comfortable leaving it with now, no permit required, just a letter for the converting a single household unit to a recovery residence.
So that should be...
For eight and under, right?
For eight and under.
Yeah.
But if we required a permit for that, would we have to require it for everything?
For, for here, I think the residential care home, group home, or the recovery residence, converting a single-family home to one of those types of uses, you currently don't require... converting a single-family home to one of those types of uses, you currently don't require a permit. You just require a letter. You can require a permit as a permitted use if you want to.
Thoughts? It should be a permitted use. Also, it could be a business and not a state-run facility.
Well, it most likely is some sort of an organization, whether it's a nonprofit, a for-profit. So I.
There are a lot of these that are for-profit.
Mm-hmm, of course.
You know, sort of group homes for disabilities that, and they're run well and they're fine. But they are profit, they're not, they're not nonprofit organizations.
Absolutely. So, eight or under, permit, no permit, currently?
Currently does not.
We don't require a permit, we just require a letter?
Yes.
So what does the letter have to state? Just asking permission?
It has to attest to conformance with the statutory criteria.
Yeah.
So we could require a permit just for the group homes and not have it affect anything else?
For any number of people?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna switch from just requiring a letter to requiring a permit, I would say that you wanna have that applied to the residential care group homes and.
Yeah, covered. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anything in that definition?
Right, yeah.
I mean, permits also protect the permittee, or, you know, the person applying for it as well as.
It establishes that they've gone through the process to.
Right.
Get approval of this use.
Am I hearing correctly that you think it should require a permit?
Not necessarily. I mean, they did say it's fine the way it is to, to require a letter, but I also got the impression from what they wrote that, you know, how are you gonna know that it complies if you don't require a permit?
So that's require a permit? Do other towns require permits?
Yes, I, I think probably quite a few of them do.
So I'm, I'm fine requiring a permit, if that makes sense? It doesn't seem like it should be that much.
Right.
More onerous than anybody else. What do you think, Stacy?
You know, I don't, I, I, being myself, I would just, letter stating what the use is, what the intended use is, but at the same time, if they do have to submit an application for a permit, then we can check all the boxes with, you know, fire safety, all of the applicable state requirements. I just don't wanna make it too complicated, but yet I don't, you know, and I don't know what the immediate need is, you know, I don't know of anyone having group homes spread around Reading in the near future.
Right, so to me, that's why it should be a permit.
But I need a permit to build my shed, right?
Well, that's true.
If I need a permit to build a shed, I should maybe need a permit if I'm gonna start up a big group home to make sure that those people are protected.
I'm, I'm cool with that.
I have a question. When you were talking about a few people living together as roommates, what's the line that changed the definition from for young people living together in a collective home to a group home?
Well, you're in the household, you're, you would be put into that previous conversation with the household. Roommates.
So what, what?
So the group home is if, so, we're not looking at it, but the group home, it goes on to talk about meaning under Vermont law for people who have a disability. So it's, it's specifically meaning.
Or certain care.
Care, care people with a disability.
Care disabilities, recovery.
I missed that that was discussed.
All right, so you're okay with permit, I'm okay with permit, you're okay with permit? Do you have what you need from us?
I don't think I was, yes. I don't think I was sharing my screen, so I'm sorry.
So are we done with this agenda item?
We're down to.
How are we doing on time, Shanann?
Good.
Okay, forty-five minutes to go. Okay. Give at least a ten-minute warning, okay?
So I think I can just jump to ADUs.
Okay. If we're moving on, that puts us down to finalizing accessory dwelling unit definitions and standards.
Where did we leave off? I thought we were pretty much done with this.
We are.
I hope Martha can remind us, because I'm a blur on the ADUs.
So my question was on number four, the accessory dwelling unit complies with Section 5.5.6.3, which is flood hazard rates. So then when you go to, uh, five, six, three, it says prohibited development in special flood hazard areas and river corridors, new residential or non-residential structures. Well, an ADU is a residential or a non-residential structure, so. But then I also noticed that number two, permitted development, they have accessory structures, so. Isn't there some overlap there?
Sorry, what's the section again? Four?
Four.
Five. Five. Six.
Oh, this is the river corridor section.
Oh, she's referenced, she's going to the reference.
Yeah. In ADUs, reference the river corridors.
So the ADU section in four point one is fine. It's just how ADUs are being referenced in the river corridors.
It says it has to comply with this, which says that residential structures are prohibited. So why would you reference that in an ADU? I mean, it's basically, it's saying you can't have a residential structure in a special flood hazard area or the river.
A new residential. No.
No.
Right.
But if you start looking at the comparisons here, if you built the ADU, whatever the elevation requirements are, then it could be allowed. But we're saying, no, it's not allowed.
Only if it's not new fill, has to be reused. Like, to elevate it, you mean? It has, you, new fill is not allowed.
So then we should just eliminate.
I think for elevation, it might be allowed.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I think if you, because that's what the state wants you to do. So if my home is in the flood zone.
Except to elevate.
It wants me to put it on a, on a knoll.
Just like Ford and the Keys.
Yeah, it's funny, they don't talk about pilings. They talk about, so it would look, it would look like, you know, this going down 106.
But they do talk about pilings in the bridge, the abutments, the new abutments to the bridge down to bedrock to secure it from flooding. That's why they get, the new bridges get a seventy-five-year lifespan.
Yeah.
And I learned that in the presentation at the select board.
Yeah.
So Martha, you're looking at, in the river corridors, prohibited development, number three, prohibited development in the flood hazard area in the river corridors, prohibited are new residential or non-residential structures. And you're concerned because up, above it, and number two, permitted, are letter B, accessory structures. Right?
But accessory structures are not accessory dwelling units.
Are, should it be clear that?
Well, right, so they may mean sheds.
So we have a definition of accessory structure, don't we?
Accessory structure?
This is one of those rabbit holes where you.
So we, I know we have a definition of accessory structure. I don't know if you mean to be leaving it in there with everything that's gone on. But right now, it's a structure which is detached and incidental and subordinate, located on the same lot, clearly related to the principal structure. And then it says for residential uses, these include, but may not, may not be limited to garages, garden, tool sheds, playhouses. So if we just put in 2B, accessory structures, and then specified non-residential, does that solve the problem? And if we're gonna say accessory structures, it's probably capital letter S since it's a defined term.
Or if you put accessory structure as defined in definition, blah, blah, blah.
So what we're trying to say is no dwelling unit, no new dwelling unit, but a playhouse, garage.
Shed.
Shed.
But then you are allowed to convert your garage to an accessory dwelling unit.
But not in a flood zone if we, if we outline this that way, right?
Yeah, so I think if you said letter B, accessory structures, capital S, which are non-residential or provided, non-residential or non-residential parentheses, or whatever you wanna do, and then down below, under prohibited development, is it just new residential structures? Because non-residential structures up above, we just said, are okay.
Right, I mean, that's was part of the issue. Those two sections contradict each other.
So my inclination would be to say non-residential in, in part two for accessory structures, and say residential in part three for, for structures. I think we have to, I think maybe next, if that works for everybody, I think we should do that, but I think we have to check the real model provisions and make sure we're not changing them, because there are implications if you change them for flood reimbursement and insurance. All right?
But then D says accessory structure in the floodway.
Well, the floodway, you don't have a, I'm pretty sure Reading doesn't have a map floodway. So the floodway is like, basically.
In the water.
So essentially, it's practically in the water.
A dock in the water.
Right, I mean.
Okay.
The smaller towns generally don't even have a map. I mean, it, it exists, it's just not mapped. So you can't really.
I know.
So if we made accessory structures non-residential in two, and prohibited development, resi, new residential structures, but leave out non-residential, does that fix it?
Seems like that's.
Martha, can you flashback to that five-point?
Yeah. So permitted.
Okay, here we go.
So you wanna say permitted, non-residential accessory structures. Is that what you're saying, Eve?
Yep.
Two B.
Mm-hmm.
And then under, and down here, under A, you would say residential. Structures, period, not just accessory, any, any residential.
New residential structures.
Okay.
Well, because there, there might be some, I mean, there are, we have outlets. We don't wanna outlaw those by mistake. Oops. Um, yeah, that's why all of these, all of the changes we make, we have to think twelve ways from Sunday to make sure that there are not accidental things happening.
So we're good?
Well, what do they mean by critical facilities prohibited? What are critical facilities?
I feel like there's a description of that somewhere.
Critical facilities, I would think, would be.
Like your heating, your.
A bridge. If you only have one way to get onto your property, maybe a bridge.
A police station, fire, rescue facility, hospital shelter, schools, nursing homes, water supply, waste treatment, et cetera. Right. Okay.
So this started with your accessory dwelling units saying it complies with Section 5.6.3. So I guess that would say if you have a garage that's in the floodplain, already it's not a new structure, you could conceivably convert that to accessory dwelling if you go through the flood hazard review.
Yeah.
And then the state would get involved.
You mean like now?
You, you probably sent out the application to the state for comment.
So where we say prohibited development, new residential structures, could we say new residential structures or uses? Because then if you were converting your garage, that would be a change of use.
You could.
I mean, you don't want people living in the floodway, right?
Are we good?
I think so. I think we can.
I think that works.
So then there were a bunch of places where the hundred-and-twenty-day allowance comes into play.
Yeah. So, 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 all right, so we're moving on, we've done the ADUs, we're on letter D. PUD hearing timelines, planned unit developments. I think we finished ADUs. PUD hearing timelines. You are proposing to make that longer to match every place else. Did you add in timelines where there were none before?
Yes.
And does that make sense? Can we get our, can everybody get stuff done that fast?
So, for example, you didn't have it here under conditional use. And now it says, "Within a hundred-and-twenty days of an application being deemed complete, the ZBA shall warn a public hearing on the application, which shall be noticed in accordance with Section 6.4."
So before that, the sky's the limit. Like, the ZB, the ZA could say, "Here's your completed application," and we could just sit on it forever.
Right, but the state changed that, and they created law now where you have to warn it within a hundred-and-twenty days.
For all of these categories?
Yes.
When?
Except for if it's an appeal of the zoning administrator, and that has to be within sixty days.
So when did that happen?
In.
From the state?
I believe it was just this year under Act 181.
So when? What month?
It was July, wasn't it?
July first. I'm pretty sure it's July first.
Okay.
So every place you've put in the hundred-and-twenty days, is that now being mandated by the July first changes? Or are there any of those that are discretionary?
Uh, I don't believe it was discretionary.
And then you're taking PUDs, which had a much shorter timeline, and putting it out to a hundred-and-twenty days.
Which you don't have to do.
I kinda like that. I mean, we don't have any.
It's just consistent.
Because it's consistent. It seems weird to have PUDs at fifteen days for a warning. It could take fifteen days for all of us just to be in town and talk to each other, frankly.
I wanna make sure I'm hearing correctly, because in the agenda, it said to a hundred-and-eighty days.
Hundred, that was a type of.
Oh, type of.
Okay, it's a hundred and twenty days.
Sorry, my bad. Thank you for catching that.
So we're just inserting what the state.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
It's now a requirement that you have to warn it. Eve pointed out when we talked that all you have to do is warn it. It doesn't, it, you know, it should have said you have to hold the hearing within 120 days, but all it says is you have to warn it.
So you could warn it for 20, 30. Right?
I mean, in theory, I suppose you could warn it for a year or two in the future, you know, which makes no sense. So I'm guessing they meant that you should hold it within 120 days, but it's not what it said.
No, I think these changes are, I think it makes sense to have some timelines, so you can't just sit on it. Presumably, most boards would operate functionally, but you never know. What happens if they don't warn it? What happens if the board doesn't warn it?
Well, I guess it would give the applicant recourse to say, you know, you've had this for four months and you haven't even warned a hearing on it yet. State law says you have to warn a hearing on it.
Is there anything in state law that talks about a consequence? And do we have to talk about a consequence or just be silent and let it play out?
I would have to look that up.
Okay.
The consequence would be the applicant challenging us.
Yeah, I mean, they'd take the recorder, I guess.
Okay. These make sense to me, then. And then changing for the, for the PUDs, changing that to 120 instead of 15 for the warning, which seems really short, I think makes good sense. And then they're all standardized.
And I sent you a new copy of the draft of the whole thing.
Yep.
So you can look at exactly how it's worded, but it's very similar under each of the different types of hearings that you may have.
Yeah, I just wasn't clear on if it was, if the 120 days was being mandated for the state for all the places that you put it in? Or we were just standardizing, but it sounds like it's being mandated for every place you put it in, except for the PUDs where we're just changing that to.
I mean, you can have less than 120 days. You can't have more than 120 days.
So I think we should go with what they allow.
Yeah, and it's standardized.
We can always do it.
Takes a lot of questions out of it. So that applies to 5.2, 5.3, 2.5, 4.3, and 6.3?
Yes.
Yep. Exactly.
So this one is site memory. With another 20 days, basically, it's all the same language. 5.4.3.
Okay. I think we're done with that.
Okay.
Letter F on our agenda. This one is a little more complicated, maybe, considering certificates of occupancy and building energy standards. Some of this is being required by the state, but then there's more, if you could walk us through that.
Okay, so right now, as far as I can tell, you only require a certificate of occupancy for construction in the flood hazard area. But wherever you require a certificate of occupancy, before you issue that certificate, you have to, the applicant has to certify, if it's a structure that's being heated or cooled, they have to certify that it meets the building energy standards, either the residential ones or the commercial ones, depending on what type of building it is. And currently, you just didn't have any language in there on that. And then the other part of that is that whenever anyone applies for a permit for a structure that's going to be heated or cooled, the zoning administrator has to provide them with a copy of those statutes or, there's a code book, basically.
Physically? In, in paper?
It, it's worded that way, but I, you know, I'm sure you can do it digitally.
So the code comes from the state?
Yes.
Energy code? So who administers the CFO?
The zoning administrator.
Because there is no building department. So the CFO is only for the energy, it's not for the structure of the building.
The CO, no, the CO is for any.
So I think what happened is Redding had no certificates of occupancy. Not that long ago, they adopted these model floodplain provisions to avail themselves of reimbursement and favorable insurance ratings. And in the floodplain, it's mandated to have a CFO. So now we have a funny situation where we only issue CFOs in the floodplain, but nowhere else. So we don't have certificates of occupancy in REG, except the floodplain, because of those model provisions. So you're suggesting changing it so we would have CFOs in Redding?
I mean, what, no. I'm saying that wherever you do require a certificate of occupancy, you also have to require that the applicant certifies that the building meets the energy.
Per the state statute.
Yes.
So we can keep it as is and not require a CO anywhere other than a floodplain?
Yes.
Yes.
Because we don't require.
Which is how it's been forever.
COs anywhere else.
Meaning you could have a house that somebody builds with toothpicks, and that's okay as long as it has the CFO for the energy?
No.
But it's not a CFO, it's like a certification.
A certificate of occupancy.
Certificate of occupancy, that it's safe to live in that house.
But only for the energy standards?
Right.
No, you guys, you guys only require a certificate of occupancy in the floodplain.
Right.
And if you require the CO in the floodplain, then you need to comply with the energy and what is the other one?
But just the energy, not, there's no building company?
Correct.
You have to prove that you comply with it.
Right.
You have to comply with it regardless of where you're building, whether you require, I mean, that's why the zoning administrator has to hand or give a link or something, has to provide an energy code.
Not if you don't require a CO, you don't have to.
You have to comply with them, that's a state law.
Regardless of the CO. So if you build a new house anywhere in the state, you got to, you've got to be handed these energy standards.
You just don't have to, you just, yeah.
I never.
You just don't have to prove that you.
I just rebuilt an addition three years ago.
Before July 1st?
So this is.
Oh, this is not new, this is from 2011.
No, so no one ever handed me a.
So they're, well, they're supposed to.
So who?
Does the zoning administrator notice?
The zoning administrator is supposed to give you.
No.
I don't have one.
The energy codes.
All right, this needs much more digging into because I'm building a new house, we're building a new house, and this never came up with Act 250, the town, the state, anywhere.
Yes.
So I'm really baffled.
So I, I think what you've put in here is the right language for the situation we're in, where we only require COs in the floodplain? And you've added the right language for the, where we have a CO. The extra issue is around these energy standards and requirements for everywhere else, even where there isn't a CO. Is that right?
I also added some language in there.
Right.
Isn't the language on our existing building permit, the statute?
Yeah.
If you can get it, certificate of occupancy, you have to get the official certificate.
Well, then that's all that I know is required unless you fall under the envelope of Act 250. If you're just building a typical residential dwelling out somewhere that's not in Act 250, you just need a wastewater permit, which includes your well. It doesn't include any energy code or, what's the other one?
So under.
They did say in our permit from Act 250, there was something about fireplace, fireplace had.
Yeah, but that was Act 250.
It was Act 250, but everything else on permit said nothing about energy.
Typically, normal residential dwellings aren't, don't fall in Act 250. We just have a piece of property that happens to fall in Act 250 because of the old mining operation. So we had to comply with Act 250, but.
There was nothing about it.
Yeah, I don't remember anything about that. And I don't remember reading anything new about that. And maybe because we don't require a CO in Redding other than in a flood zone.
But so you're still supposed to be directed to the energy codes, one way or another?
Directed to them, but complying with them.
You don't have to prove that you're complying.
Okay.
You have to comply with them, but you don't have to prove it because you don't, you're not applying for a certificate of occupancy. It's, yeah, it's, it's kind of.
So is the answer here, because it doesn't sound like our ZA is handing this out to anybody.
No.
Is the answer here to add this on to our application and just say?
I think Ray makes a good point, that it's in our application that you should.
It's in there now.
Yeah, it's, it is in there now. I think it's changed.
The application is supposed to.
Yeah.
So we're fine.
I think so.
It says about the energy, building energy codes?
No, it says all state and federal, I believe it's all state and federal application requirements, or something like that.
Yeah, I'll send you this, I'll send you the language on.
That'd be great. Let's, let's dig into what is the state, exactly what is the state requiring the town to be giving out for the energy codes or not?
Because I really, I mean, just, you know, frankly, Vermont isn't equipped to inspect all these houses. There's no building department. There, I mean, it's just, they couldn't put a rule or a requirement in place, or even maybe a suggestion, but they have no way of going around to every new construction or every addition and saying, Jane, you didn't put in that power right.
How much is about the tier, and then they do have?
Well, that's true, the lighting.
So the language that we have, the language that we have in the floodzone language, I think is fine.
Yeah.
Right?
I agree.
And we're going to dig into this section 6.0 a little more and try to figure out what the state is requiring. Is that right?
I mean, this is what's required, but I'll send you the exact statute of information so you can adjust it.
Okay. So you, according to that, you should have gotten the standards when you put in your application.
Repeat that?
According to the language here that Martha has added in, which she says is now required, you should have gotten these energy standards when you put in your application to build a house.
Okay, so if it's a matter of the applicant receiving, when they submit the application, a copy of the Vermont residential building energy code book, whether, I think the key is, is for clarity for the applicant, is it required or suggested?
This is what the zoning administrator has to do.
And I.
The zoning administrator has to hand you, there are physical copies. I'm sure they can, in this day and age, they can also give you a link or whatever.
Okay. So that's great, but I don't want to get into a situation like Eve brought up, where we are doing things with words that ultimately require people to comply with something that is just a suggestion.
That complying with the state energy codes is not a suggestion, that's state law.
So every new building has to comply with Vermont's energy code?
If it's heated or cooled, yes.
Hmm, that's new to me.
Can we say zoning administrator instead of administrative officer, since we're consistent in our ordinance? So this is only applying to the ZA. I don't think, I think it's confusing, because if I'm, if I am naive about building and I don't know, I might think I'm supposed to comply with it, but it's not what it says. So maybe it's okay, I mean.
Well, it says that they, that you, so you're going to build a house, they hand you the code or they give you the link.
And then I got to read that.
And you got to read that, and it's going to tell you.
Okay.
What you have to do.
So we should make sure Bob knows about this.
Yeah, because I don't think he's doing it.
Okey-dokey.
And if it is a requirement, then yeah, we definitely should, or we're going to get in trouble again.
Sorry, I thought this was a new requirement. I didn't realize this was a pre-existing requirement. I thought this was part of the July 1.
No, I think this is 2011.
2011.
All right.
That's why I was surprised it was, there was nothing in your regulations already.
Well, I'm surprised on a lot of, on a lot of levels with this, because it never, ever came up in our process.
We will circle back with the ZA and make sure that all relevant parties are apprised. Okay. So we have two items left. One is reviewing the idea of small business zoning districts.
Eve, before we move to, excuse me, so with the last conversation, we're, we're just benching it until we get further information, is that?
Well, I think the language that Martha.
The flood zone is fine.
And I think this language is accurate. This isn't requiring anything except requiring the ZA to comply with state law, which is to hand out those provisions.
Okay.
We should get together with our ZA and make sure he's aware of that. And now, I don't think we need to look into it anymore, because you've satisfied me that it's not required for.
Yeah, because it doesn't.
Builder to do anything. You just have to look at that and make sure you're in compliance with that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So that's done, agree on this language?
Yes. Yeah, sorry not to make that clear. Review small business zoning districts and then consider the airport's helipads language that Martha sent around. Do you want to?
So my concern was with the small business was your definitions a little odd, and you allow them in every district.
So are you talking about definitions in the back of the code?
Yes.
The actual definition?
So a user structure dedicated to retail, communications, other than transmission and receiving equipment, or like commercial or manufacturing purposes.
And when we go to our districts?
It's in everyone. It's a conditional use, so it's not like there's no standards, there's, you know, all the conditional states. But depending on the type of business, like, I mean, if it's industrial, I mean, you wouldn't typically see that out at the end of a class four road. I mean, you want to, you're going to have trucking involved probably, and usually you want that on a major paved road. So just to say, to define it kind of vaguely and then allow it everywhere, seems like you're opening yourself up to lots of.
So is this a state concern or is this?
No, no, this was my concern when I was reading your regulations. I'm like, wow, that's, you know, what would that exclude? I mean, it's, I don't know. I mean, other than.
I think this is another rabbit hole thing, we can talk about this for.
Yeah, so, and we're at, near the end, so when I was talking to Eve, we basically talked about flagging it.
Doing what?
Flagging it as something to think about as you go forward.
So I guess my first question would be, what are the concerns and what types of use would you think you should prohibit or we should prohibit?
I was looking around at other small towns to see what they have, and I found one that I thought was pretty interesting. It's the town of Shrewsbury. They define light industrial, they, Vermont.
Just below Killington?
They define commercial and light industrial, and I thought it was pretty good definitions. And then they don't allow them everywhere. It's just something that I think you might want to think about. And I think we're pretty much out of time to try and tackle something like that, but, and I'm happy to share the Shrewsbury one for future reference, if you want to look at it and see if you like it, maybe in the next year or two.
I think it's good, I think it's, it would be hard to cram in here. I think it would be good to consider another model and think it through. I mean, the concern is always that I bought my, you know, beautiful home in the RR10, and then Jane here starts up a manufacturing plant right next to me. We are trying to add performance standards, which would help with noise and light and dust, and so that would help a lot to alleviate those concerns.
I mean, like, I think when we were talking, I said you could put a mini mall in your barn. barn.
Always looking to make money.
Flea market, flea market, mini mall.
The next brim field.
So you're you're proposing that we not tackle this in this go around, but after we get this or you want to tackle it in this go around?
Well, I guess I I feel like our time is limited, and I think it might be hard to tackle it in a fulsome way in this go around. But I think we should think about, does it make sense to have small business, which is defined as all those things, you know, light industrial in an RC 25? Is that allowed in the RC 25?
It is.
It is. Or, you know, the conservation district or the RR10, which is where people tend to have, you know, small farms and, you know, nice homes. So or even the RR5 because those are even smaller parcels. So I think we should consider it, but I think for right now it would be a hard thing to pin down.
Well, and life is changing so rapidly, and then these are things, and I've said this before in previous meetings, you know, we will have to at some point be a little fast on our feet and tackle issues that we weren't expecting to happen in a year or six months or five years. So I agree with you.
So Martha, maybe you could send around if you have sort of an alternative we should be thinking about in the put a pin in it place, if you could send that around to us to start to think about and, you know, if there are reasonable restrictions or we don't want to restrict it at all and and rely on performance standards and conditional use review, and these also require site plan approval as protection.
Right, yeah, I definitely don't think there's enough time to tackle it right now.
Okay, that brings us to our last item. Consider airports and helipads in the zoning code.
That was going to be an ordinance.
So.
When?
Martha, tell us what your thoughts are on this. I have some thoughts, but you.
Yeah, so a few years ago, I think every town got a letter from the state saying, if you don't have anything in your regulations and someone wants to put in an airport or a helipad or whatever, we're supposed to consult with you, but if you don't have anything, then it's it's all up to us, and we'd really like it if you told us what you wanted. You want them or you don't want them, and if you do want them, what are the standards that you want to follow?
So there's no requirement by the state because I read your by VSA 202, and there's no requirement saying that you.
No, it's not that you have to.
Right.
It's just that in the absence of anything, the state's going to act however they want.
We could become the next East Hampton.
Yeah.
You're going to get that Tiffany on Main Street.
So what are your concerns or your thoughts?
So I would probably have to recuse myself from this vote because we actually have an FAA certified landing strip on our property.
A landing strip.
A landing strip. But I was really surprised because in the code, in the town plan from 2018, it didn't mention landing strips and helipads. And then the town plan of 2020, the most recent town plan, it said we don't want them. And I thought, well, we already have one, 2022. So it's a good reminder of why you need to watch things. And if we're going to take things away, existing things really need to be grandfathered.
Absolutely.
So where we have a landing strip.
Ogden's have them. There's a lot of people who have them.
The halls go over our house in their helicopter. It's not a it's not a dangerous issue for us now, but to say that all of a sudden they're not allowed anymore, that's an asset. That's an asset of my property, which is why I would have to accuse myself from this vote. So I'm out, but clearly I'm not in favor of it.
I'm the only one that have that because you have so.
I know I have a landing strip. We're two mountains.
You have a helipad.
Yes.
So.
So you don't have a quorum on the issue.
No quorum. I guess the measure fails. No, I mean, it, you know, if it were an issue of noise or significant, you know, disturbing of the town, that would be one consideration. But where we where we are not having an issue with it, it seems a little punitive and not justified.
So that was one of my questions when I saw this float again because it floated back when Kathy was the chair and we moved on from it. And now I was really surprised that it came back up. So are there any complaints? Have you heard any complaints about helicopters, airplanes, anything?
No. However, however.
Well, I was going to have a question. Is there any law or regulation that stipulates, you know, the flyover your home, did they maintain a certain height to avoid sound disturbance to neighbors as they are approaching?
I'm sure the FAA has some rules.
I'm sure the FAA does, but I've been the what you sent us in from Vermont, there's nothing.
Yeah, the town does not, and nor would it be, I think, appropriate.
Well, I mean, there are time restrictions too in most places that have a lot of residential area as to when you can land or fly over or take off or anything like that.
I didn't complain about it, but someone was flying pretty close over my property. Maybe you scale it up. I was curious. I was like, what are you?
I hear a helicopter come over my house at like 11:30 at night, and I know whose it is. It's not yours.
I didn't know I had a helicopter.
So I'm wondering, it was part of the ordinances that they were like two years ago. There were the select board tasked, the planning commission, with creating ordinances, and one of them was helipads and landing strips. So what's the difference between the ordinance and?
I mean, the zoning ordinance is an ordinance.
Okay, so I don't know why they why that came up at that time.
Well, I do know it came up. When when did Kathy leave? Was that?
November.
November. So I know it came up in her last meeting, and then it wasn't brought up again. I don't know what what was brought up before that.
It seems to me that there's no issue now. It doesn't seem like there's an issue now, but I can see it in the future that there could be like more private planes and helicopters, you know? I don't know.
Well, there could be, and then I think you have to also look at the respect to the neighbors and the amount of property that is being buffered, you know, by landing and taking off. Of course, you couldn't do it in the village without disturbing a lot of people, but when you're on 200 acres or 100 acres, who are you disturbing, you know, unless they're buzzing?
Or unless they're they are flying over coming in and then so is it possible to put time restrictions on like?
I think if it becomes an issue, we can tackle all of those things because there are, you know, coming in in a helicopter, you can go high and then come straight down so you're not doing a gradual landing and disturbing potentially other neighbors.
But then we have to grandfather in.
Who hasn't.
Who's been doing it already, right? So I don't know. It's very interesting.
I mean, it is in the town plan. Usually when you're doing zoning regulations, you're trying to implement your town plan.
True.
So that's where.
But that came into the town plan between 2018 and 2022. But when the town plan gets reviewed again, I personally will be speaking out against that because I don't think it is reasonable for existing properties that have them to have those taken away and outlawed when they're not.
Yeah.
Well, normally things are grandfathered, that existing things are grandfathered with so.
Well, they wouldn't be here. It says this is pretty clear, except for existing facilities on public property for the purpose of emergency services.
This is just, you know, you can say something different.
Right.
This was just an example for you to look at.
No, I think it's important to have them because even like flooding, okay? So some people get cut off, so to be able to come in through the air is important, you know? I think it's important to keep them.
I think we we definitely need to keep an eye on it, and if the issue becomes urgent for quality of life and neighborliness, we look at it again. But in the moment, I'm not seeing an urgent need. But again, I'm recused. I should stop talking.
Well, you probably have to.
Yeah.
I'm the only one that can talk.
Richard, Brad, Nathan.
Okay, how much is it worth?
I will speak on this because both of our direct neighbors have helicopters and they fly in. It doesn't bother us at all. And if you're going to try to do something like this, then I think you had a good point. If you want to grandfather because you're afraid that this is going to become the Hamptons, then grandfather those properties in there doing it, just like with the SDRs, you know? You can't take something away from somebody who's been doing it since the 1940s. Can't take a helipad away from somebody who's already had and been enjoying it for 30, 40 years. So I don't think this is necessary. I don't think it's a problem in rating. It sounded like there's helicopters flying everywhere. I know it's what you're talking about. I know who that was, but I think that was a special event. It was not us, but I don't think it's a problem. And if it becomes a problem, then it should be addressed, but right now I don't see this a problem at the time.
So how about for new helipads and new landing strips?
Well, I think, like Eve said, this has this is a conversation for the future. I, you know, again, we're talking, you know, just like a small business, we're speaking about, you know, a big, big conversation in grandfathering in, which has its layers of complication and new, which has its layers of complication, the village versus rural, you know, implications. So and then you certainly don't want to get into a situation to where you're targeting certain people in a community.
Class four.
Because, yeah, I took the words out of my mouth.
Can I just?
Sure.
Every year, Jim Hegg brought this, a favor of you, meaning as this helicopter is up here, but during Irene, Jim Hegg brought his helicopter up for the town to go around and survey the damage.
That's what I meant, right? Exactly.
I think we can sit on this one for a while. And let's beware, you know, if there are complaints, we need to honor them with bringing it up again, but.
Well, it's just like the I don't know if it was a complaint. I guess it was a complaint with the abandoned cars, you know? I haven't heard about that, but on a few other occasions, but now it's right here in front of us. You know, but that's another big conversation.
That is another big conversation. And Shanann, you were supposed to say it's 8:50.
She's enjoying the conversation.
All right, it is 9:02. I think we have to put the abandoned car conversation to the next meeting and I, yeah, that's tricky. I mean, I don't think we can legislate to particular examples, and it's, yeah.
So this is just something you can discuss if you don't need it necessary.
Currently, our next meeting is scheduled for October 7th, which is our normal day. It would be the first Monday. Does that work?
Yeah, a quick quick comment about how are we responding to this this email? Do you respond?
Oh, I just said I'd bring it up to the group.
Okay, so how are we going to follow up collectively?
I don't know. I don't know. We can ask him to write a letter to us.
And I don't know if it's necessarily to us. Maybe it should be to the select board.
Select board.
Yeah.
I think I think it's worth maybe a conversation with the town clerk to see if there's any precedent or anything else in play that I'm not aware of, and and then maybe redirecting to the select board. I mean, for us, it's more of a big picture, slow grinding. This is what our zoning ordinance looks like, not a.
Yeah, either ZA or the select board.
You was asking if there's anything in place for it. Is there a question or no question? Is there?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I haven't seen anything.
I will commit to talking to the town clerk and seeing if I can find out anything more about that.
It's not the first time it's come up.
Is it not? Okay. And I am happy to get back in touch with him as well. Maybe you can remind him. What's his name? Keith?
Keith. Maybe maybe Claire can remind you.
Yes, exactly. So October 7?
She just shot herself.
Wait. October 7th, we are on. The November meeting needs to be changed because it's the night before Election Day, and this room will not be available because of voting booths. What do we what do we think? And that and if we go by the schedule we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, is that the night for the hearing?
Potentially.
I mean, should that be the night for the hearing?
I mean, you might still be able to squeeze it in.
Or should the hearing be in October? No, we're not ready.
No, you're not ready for the hearing. So let's see where, you know, let's see. We'll do our best.
So November 4th should be our meeting. November 5th is.
But if you go to the second Monday, that's a select board meeting, right?
Right.
So the 11th is the select board. We could maybe do Wednesday, the 6th.
I think that's what you said.
Does that work?
Does that work?
Yeah.
Martha?
I think so.
So the idea is in our October meeting, we're going to hammer out the rest of the loose ends and then get a red line to review in our free time, and then in November have our hearing.
That's what we're hoping.
Best case.
Okay.
Best case scenario.
So I was going to have this.
We might be able to bump it a month if we needed to, and then we would have our hearing in December, hand it off to the select board at the holidays. They will thank us for that, I'm sure. And then they would have their hearing on the second Monday in January, right?
Okay.
You'd need to make sure that they get it from you enough time to warn their hearing.
Yes.
And that assumes that.
They'll stay a lot on their plate.
As well, yeah.
Yeah. And that is going to be.
Well, their meetings are short anyway, you know? They don't even last two hours.
All right, so we're going to look towards the regular meeting on October 7th, rescheduling November meeting to Wednesday, November 6th. Rebecca, does that work for Okemo Valley TV?
Yes.
Okay. You are a critical part of our meetings, and if I don't say it every time, we thank.
Thank you.
Okemo Valley TV for providing coverage and support. Gentlemen, Claire, any other public comments before we entertain a motion to adjourn?
No, nothing for me.
Okay. All of that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, so no problems with that. We are adjourned. Thank you.